My nephew came up.
It's really cool.
We went out, he, his, you know, his daughter caught fish. So he came up.
Our son?
Yeah.
Well.
You read the same one?
Sure.
Did she get in trouble with the park?
So there's another guy that's back here.
He's still taking service.
The little girl walked up, had a pinch that it was all, it was trouble. Yeah. Yeah. Exactly.
If you have a reason.
Okay, it's six o'clock, so we will start our townwork session for July 8th. You don't do lead in or is Karen?
No, I think Karen's just going.
Rival day.
Yes, Bruce.
Perfect. All right, so tonight, we're going to talk to you guys. A few months ago, I was approached by the high school, and they have a new vocational program that'll be partnered with Severance High School and with Windsor High School. They approached us and asked me to serve on an advisory board for what's called the ACE Committee, and I'll kind of get into some of those different descriptions of what they all are here in a minute. But they approached me, and then with that advisory committee, it consists of a bunch of folks from the community. We've got folks from the Summit, Vestas, Universal Forest Products. But what their goal really is, is to expose careers and jobs that are in our community into these high school kids' lives, and also teach them that what's appropriate to wear to an interview, how do you approach someone that you are wanting a job from. But what that really sparked was more conversation with some of the leaders in that group. They want to get more involved with the town, and one thing that we've definitely really struggled with in the Parks Department and the Rec Department with our entry-level jobs is they may only require a GED or a high school diploma. We can't get people to apply for those jobs. We have a park operator job right now, which is an entry-level job. We've had it open for two weeks now, and we've gotten one candidate. We called that candidate, they're from out of state, and they really just want to get to Colorado, and the pay's not enough, is what they told us. So what we would really like to do is try and get a collaboration going with some of these different high school groups and these education leaders and move forward with them. So I roped myself into a new committee, because I have plenty of time on my hands to do that. They just meet on a quarterly basis, so it's really not a large commitment, but it's a great group of individuals in our community. So the first program we're going to talk, yeah.
Sorry, so what I, reading what you gave us, I was struggling with, in what capacity are we being involved? Are we, are they looking at us as an employer and just want us part of their program?
Yeah.
Or are they looking at us as a participant in the overall program structure, funding, administration, et cetera?
Yeah, so as soon as, I'll go through the program overviews, and then I'll just kind of, I've got some bullet points on how we can get involved with them. The first group is SWAP. It's a school-to-work alliance program. This program, the leader is Desiree Sandoval with the SWAP program. She has been in charge of that program for quite a few years at the school district, and now will be overseeing both high schools as they continue to expand. What she does is she finds workplaces in the community for these kids to work. So if I go to Paul's Place of Business, and he's got a position, she then makes sure that they're qualified, goes over, you know, job descriptions and stuff like that, but she seeks out employment for these kids. Through the SWAP program, there's, that's actually a state-funded program, and they pay up to 160 hours per quarter for these kids to have these jobs. So it might be that we have a junior in high school who can come work at the rec center, and they would shadow and job work with, say, a facility technician, or a facility specialist, or a front desk coordinator. But then the state-funded program actually pays that salary. They pay for their workers' comp, they pay all of those things. So all we do is provide that leadership and guidance through the SWAP program.
But these are children with disabilities, right?
They are not, no. They, it may just be that I'm an individual, and maybe a four-year degree just isn't for me, and I want to get some workplace experience. There are some kids through the SWAP program that are on IEPs or, you know, individualized education plans that may need, so that next program, the ACE program, so that is the alternative cooperative education. These positions are the ones that are the special education, high-risk kids. All sorts of fun.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so the ACE program, we have partnered with the ACE program in the past. About eight years ago, we actually had a really strong partnership with them. We'd have some changes in leadership. We did fund that program. They would work about two to four hours a week in the past with that program. And that's actually the advisory committee that I sit on, is the ACE Advisory Committee.
Can I explain what high-risk means?
Maybe behavioral needs, and then some is just moral learning disability.
It could also be first-generation students whose parents maybe didn't finish high school or go to college.
And the way they've explained things to me in the past too with the ACE program is these kids might be on that track or that borderline if they're going to get that high school diploma.
Right.
Or do they steer them in the direction of more getting their GED? So these kids are kind of, there's a specific program and classes that these kids actually take. Through the ACE program, they actually do, like, mock interviews, they teach them how to dress appropriately, so that when they go out to get those jobs, they, so, it looks like I missed a slide. The COE program is the cooperative education program. That actually, we have students that work the front desk at the rec center, and then we also have students that work here at Town Hall, they tend to work the customer service desk also. That is a program that is funded by the town. That's a part-time employee that's been in our budgets ever since I actually started here. We've had fantastic experience also with the COE program. I've actually, Logan Anderson, who started with this when he was 14, and then when he finally became a senior at the high school, he entered into that COE program. You do have to maintain a certain grade level with that, and then it also is a required business class. So you do have to be in the business program in order to qualify for the COE program. But Logan Anderson went through that, got into that business class, worked for us his senior year, and then obviously, we hired Logan on, I think he's a sophomore in college, and then he finished his degree at UNC in business administration, and then we hired him as a manager on duty, and now he's actually a recreation coordinator. So we've actually held on tight to our COE students, and usually, there's always a part-time opening, and then we can get him to stick with us at least through college. So another great program with the business department at the school. But just some ways that the school district is looking for us to assist is workplace tours. So a couple weeks ago, I had two students that came through. I just did a workplace tour with them. We kind of just test drove it to see how it would go. We sat down with each employee and talked to Bobby, and talked about how Bobby does, you know, sports programming and such, and then we went on into Sandra, and we talked about what it's like, you know, with the administrative role and the front desk, and we shadowed for a couple minutes with, like, a facility specialist. So those workplace tours is one way that they're looking for us too. I think some great opportunities with public works, you know, with our Parks Department. I think there's definitely, with local government jobs, there are so many opportunities that I think we could give some amazing tours and find some incredible candidates out of that. Informational interviews, these are just one-on-one. You sit down with an individual and talk about job positions. What is Shane doing in his job? What is Ian doing in his job? And maybe that sparks an interest with these individuals, then they, the directors and leaders in those programs can then start scaring them, well, if you want to be a recreation coordinator, these are the steps you need to take and the path that you need to go down. Mock interviews, the last two weeks of school, I participated in these at the high school. Great experience, I actually came in, I had given them job descriptions for parks and rec jobs, and then they all applied for those jobs, so I had to interview 10 kids who then came in and said they either wanted to work at the front desk at the rec center or for the Parks Department. Then I asked 12 specific questions. Then I actually interviewed, or I rated them based on, would I hire them, eh, put them in the maybe pile, or we'll call you, I think is what their description was. But it also, you then sat and gave them 10 minutes of feedback on how they did, how they introduced themselves, did they have a good handshake, how did they dress? But these teachers, through these classes, will work with them all school year on appearance and all that. Job shadowing, they want to just have different experiences, kind of like the, not really just sitting down with an employee, but going out, you know, with a police officer for a ride-along, or, you know, going with someone with the streets department. Unpaid work experience, they do have those opportunities, and then you would specify how many hours on the job, just to get some of them some of that experience of more volunteering versus a paid experience. And then the paid experience, which is that SWAP program, they pay the salary, they cover workers' comp, all the liability. We then supervise, give feedback, and oversee those employees. But like I've mentioned up there, the COE program is the salary that's paid by the employer. I believe they typically have about 30 kids through the COE program. They tend to struggle to find opportunities for them. For the paid work experience for the SWAP program, they actually pay competitive salaries. So if my custodian makes $13, make sense, the school district pays that individual $13, make sense. So they actually pay them a competitive salary. The one thing we're just looking for discussion tonight is kind of some support from you guys to move forward to creating this partnership. One thing I would like to see happen is the Town Windsor Employees Forum Committee that then reaches out, and we all then work in partnership with Weldari Four, with both high schools coming online, and see what we can do to get the word out about all of our opportunities, and really see if we can't start filling that void with giving some of those entry-level positions, to get more candidates. So I can answer any questions about my past experience with them? Happy to.
I'm encouraged to see that the COE program worked with Logan. We have real experience with that, having panned out to turn into future leaders and top staff.
We've had fantastic luck with the COE program, obviously.
That's been around a long time.
Yeah.
Back in the 1970s, I hired a number of those students, and they were well-trained, and they dressed properly, you know, they conducted themselves very well. I'm glad to see that kept that going.
My wife was in COE back in, like, the 80s.
Really?
And she worked at HP, and she worked there for, like, 10 years after college, so.
Is there overlap of these three programs, SWAP, ACE, and COE? Is it separate programs or in by separate departments?
So they all were separate, and then now with the new high school coming online, Michelle Smith, Mrs. Smith, who is the, before was in charge of the COE program, she's actually now moving from Windsor High School to the district office, and she will oversee what they're calling their vocational program. And there's all the, like, state standards are now changing too, through the education program for the vocational education, and that's why they're hiring her as that director of vocational. And then she'll have the SWAP leader, the ACE teachers will be at both Windsor High School and Severance High School.
If I understood you, a student who is placed through the SWAP program or the ACE program, while they're getting on-the-job training, experience, exposure, it's not a cost to the town in terms of salary or payment?
No, the SWAP and ACE are not a cost to the town, where the COE program has been a budgeted line item since I started.
Right. So it would be no additional cost, it's already a budgeted position that's ultimately made feel.
Correct.
How about the cost for participating in SWAP or ACE? There's no direct dollar cost, but obviously, some involvement with staff time?
It would be staff time, yep. Greeley West and Greeley Central have partnered and really have a fantastic program kicked off with Universal Forest Products and Vestas. Vestas actually goes into those high schools and teaches classes, so that's what they're really hoping, and they have two representatives from those two organizations now that are sitting on this advisory committee also, so they're really hoping to get more community leaders in there. I've talked to Tom Pranger at the bank, because he said that he's struggling getting tellers at the bank, so we're definitely just trying to spread the word, use connections to help get this program going and help in some of those areas that we're struggling to staff.
I've had some experience with ACE when I was a school district administrator and in charge of activities with some problems that were under my department, I wasn't directly involved, but very beneficial. I mean, the cost to the community, to the town, is staff time, okay? But the benefit is community relations, that's improving workforce for our community, and also, we may grow some of our own employees, so if the staff can work out the time, and I don't know how you're going to do that with, if it's a volunteer thing, or, but I think it's tremendous benefit in three different ways. One question I would have, let's speak for the school district, not for you. Do, how many stats on how many students are participating in each area and any, is there any follow-up, like, if there's 30 people in ACE program, how many get jobs?
Yeah.
You may not have that data, but be curious to know.
You know, I'm sure they actually probably do, because, like with the SWAP program, Desiree definitely, she's got her list, and she doesn't really let them go out and seek out positions until she knows they're prepped and ready. So yeah, she's got all of her clients that she works with, and she's got a rolling roster, and I know COE has that same thing, and ACE is a class roster, so I can definitely give you those numbers, absolutely.
And maybe like a year from now, some follow-up of how many of our staff are involved, and it'll just be nice to see what's actually happening in our town, from the town government. Just to point your confirmation, that Bright Futures Board is also looking at a stronger connection base, as an idea of developing workforce in Melt County, Melt County. And there we are, okay.
Tara, it sounds like you've had experience with this in your capacity with CROC. Have other departments in the town?
Well, with COE, yes, and then with the ACE, I've had a little bit of background on that lately, but not real involvement.
And I would say they're really just pushing now to get that community involvement, and not just the classroom experience, but bringing people in, because they sometimes feel like they're preaching to the choir when they talk to them about how they should dress, and how they should, you know, have conversations with these, you know, supervisors and managers that are hiring, but when an individual, as ourselves, comes in and starts talking about, well, I wouldn't hire you because you have ratty old sneakers on, or this is important in our position on, you know, how you approached me. I had one girl that, in the mock interview, she's like, oh, I really hate people. And I was like, you know that there's lots of people in the rec center, right?
You should be a town manager.
But you know, just, you know, talking her through.
Yeah, fucking IT.
It's interesting, because a conversation we had a month ago at Bright Futures again was, you know, they're buying scholarship for a lot of these high school students, mid-fish high schools, going on to either Ames or Front Range or CSU or something, but then trying to attract, how to get any jobs, enters a gap in just soft skills, how to dress, how to interview, how to shake hands, how to write a resume. So those things, you can have the technical knowledge of your job, personality, you know, it's a whole bunch of things that go along with getting a job, so.
Well, I think that the perception from the person interviewing on whether they think it's socially appropriate and stuff, you know, I've done these a lot in classes, wrong bones, and say, I know that you guys all think tattoos are really cool, and earrings and piercings are, but, you know, this is a guy hiring, and I don't want to see that stuff. And just kind of set an expectation for them, like, you're not being hired by your peers, so you've got to, like, think about that, or you can go through and black out, kind of redact a job application, just go, you know, so there's, you can't tell who it was, but look, they misspelled their hometown. How they doing, are we going to give them an interview? You know, like, when you just can go through and point out, or look at, like, the criminal history, like, it goes under the back, how good are they doing? You know, so I think you can really just give them the practical.
And Cortez has a Z in O S.
That's good.
Yeah.
And correct.
So I don't know, have you heard from the board what you needed to hear?
I think just looking for that approval and support to move forward with, kind of, forming a committee and working closer with the school district.
Right, and I think part of this is, you know, the mayor and I went to a presentation on ACE, and saw that CE really had been pretty instrumental with that program, and they were really celebrating broadly, so everything they had done. But one thing that struck both of us was it really had a great partnership with Vestas to do, you know, with their schools, we're like, well, why don't we do it in Windsor? Like, what's happening here? That's our firm, so, you know, we talked a little bit about how can we get more involved with ACE and just get the town engaged in that, and then just talked with staff, they were like, geez, Tara's already doing that, let's get her in. And so I think this is more just kind of getting feedback from the board, letting know we've got some things going on, seeing if there's anything specifically you'd like us to try to accomplish. Otherwise, I think we would kind of move forward to getting a little committee together, meeting with these folks, and seeing if we can, you know, because again, even if these don't turn into our employees, I think if they turn into better citizens, great, you know, that's worth a little bit of time to make that happen.
Well, I think just the exposure to different jobs that we have, like, the one girl who said, I don't like people, and I said, well, what do you like? I like flowers. You know, then we started talking about being a horticulturist, you know, you can go out and you can work, you know, and all those planter boxes on Main Street, did you know that we hire seasonal folks to maintain those and water those every day? And then she was like, oh, cool, don't have to bring my own lawn mower? And I was like, no, we'll provide that, but, you know, just exposing them to other jobs, not yet. They don't know exist within our, you know, community.
I mean, it sounds like, Shane, this is a staff issue for you, as to whether your department heads and other staff have the time, and if you feel as an administrator that they've got the time and capability, then certainly, they're great programs. I keep, when I look at this, and I always knew about the Vestas-Greeley thing, and it always bothered me, that they ended up going into Greeley rather than into their neighborhood. But maybe we're not pushing it, maybe our community hadn't, so is, does economic development have a role to play in making introductions between the Weldari Four, local leadership, and the businesses that they engage with routinely?
That absolutely could be a piece of puzzle there. Absolutely, I think just when we kind of ask the questions, see what the needs are, I think having staff in the room, it's like, oh, yeah, there's a Stacey issue, let's put these people together. So I think that absolutely could be part of it. So I think that absolutely could be part of it.
Yeah.
I know that Ames has a concerted effort to work with Vestas, for instance, and want some of our, to have a job workforce training and placement, you know, as a part of Ames being in our back door as well. I know that Mary Gabriel with Ames has already had several conversations with Vestas and some of the other larger employers in Windsor, to make sure that they're getting the graduates from Windsor.
But it does seem like some of these programs are targeted toward students or even young adults with disabilities. So as you look at getting involved in that program and bringing someone, there may be a higher level of oversight and administration that's required and involvement with that individual. So again, I guess I would absolutely leave it to you and your staff to figure out what level makes sense for their time available.
And there's definitely that, you know, close relationship with the school district too, like if a COE student is working, isn't working out, you definitely check in quite frequently with them and you have those meetings with the instructors. And with the SWAP program and ACE program, they will not allow them to go out into the workforce unless they have met all their expectations, so, and then I think if you do have issues, you just kind of communicate it back to the district and if it's not working out, kind of like any other employee, you terminate that relationship.
Okay, anything else on this topic?
Thanks, Gary.
Appreciate it, thank you so much. Appreciate reaching out to the community. Most of our board members can read, but I don't know if anything we need to point out on the future meetings.
I would just say that.
I said most of them can read.
Well, July.
Pictures could use pictures.
July 15th, we will have an update on NISP, you know, we'll have Carl here from NISP and, so it's not, it doesn't show on that yet and I'm sorry, we've just been trying to get that together.
What date was that?
That's July 15th, so our next work session.
Good, good.
We've moved today, it shows, it doesn't show in the agenda, but we're not taking the night off, we just had that pinned down, so we'll have NISP here to do an update.
Good, that's a work session.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Who was going to be here presenting about that?
I, I think Carl Bauer, Carl Bruder.
Brower.
Brower, Carl Brower.
With Norlern?
Yes, sir.
Would there be any need to have any other interested parties in that conversation or is it just a update on us? I'm just trying to look at the bigger, you know, conversation.
Yeah, it's an update on, what I'd like to focus on is short-term plans, their kind of budget, you know, because the budget keeps on moving around as the timeline moves out, so.
More your questions.
It's really just, I think, for this board to say, this is kind of what we're doing in the short term, this is a budget request you're going to be seeing this next year and, and so having those discussions.
Okay.
And then we did schedule an early current meeting just so we could.
Tonight?
Yeah, just having Brad.
So we'll take five or 10 minutes, upstairs from your current? Does that work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're upstairs for.
Then you're starting back when?
I'll take 10.
Here's a presentation.